Our last meeting of the year. Tom, anything at all going on today?
No, you can take off the travel expense thing.
Okay.
It's just not ready yet.
All right.
We'll make your meeting even shorter.
Okay.
It doesn't matter though, because you have to stick around for a public hearing at 12:15, no matter what, so.
Is that you?
Yeah, it was me.
Okay, we'll take that off. Anything else?
Unless you guys have questions.
No, you did such a good job explaining it the last couple of meetings that I think you answered everything, so.
So, we changed the amendment for this year's budget by a little bit more. We increased it by, it was enough to go get two more forerunners this year for the sheriff's office to help alleviate the crunch that is coming as they become more fully staffed in their vehicle needs. So Lieutenant Summerall, I met, and we decided to proceed with two more vehicles for this year's budget.
Is that through mineral lease?
No.
Okay.
That's why it's in your budget.
Well, I just didn't know we had it all up, so, okay.
Okay. Sean?
Hi, I'm on the agenda. Mrs. Wilcox wants some penalties and interest forgiven, or penalty basically, I guess. I'm not representing Mrs. Wilcox, but she's unable to attend, so I will present that to the commission if you have any questions on that.
Okay. All right. Very good. Dale?
Nope, don't have any.
Okay. Marcus?
Subdivision today.
Okay. Chrissy? Nada? Okay. Marla?
Just if we end up going over break into RDA for a public hearing at 12:15.
Okay.
And beer licenses, I guess, if you have any questions on those, they've all been signed off by the sheriff's office, so.
Okay, yeah, I read through them four.
No taste test.
Grouse Creek, Plymouth, South Willard, and Riverside. Okay. Yeah.
After you might you, um, then he wants to be...
Taken off.
Replaced for...
Mineral lease.
They go back to...
He's moved as well. I don't think he no longer resides in the mineral lease.
He lives at Tremont.
Do we have any possible replacements? Have we heard anything from mineral lease? Any suggestions? Okay. All right.
Let's put out an email and just ask if anybody's got anybody that they want to put forward.
Okay. All right, very good. Jenica?
I do have an executive session item on personnel for you, just to brief you.
Okay.
Is that if Steve shows up, or?
It's either way.
Okay.
You need to know either way.
Okay.
Okay. Marla?
You're the next one.
Just it? Just the beer licenses?
Not me.
No, I...
Make something up.
I started talking beer licenses and never give you a chance to see if there was anything else, so.
No, I'm good.
Heard a comment over here and I was trying to ignore it, so. Anything, Comish?
Just Merry Christmas.
That works.
It's the last one before Christmas, isn't it? Oh my gosh. I got a couple of things on the agenda.
Okay.
We've got a big man back there that we're gonna honor for his arm wrestling things, so it's gonna be pretty cool.
Left-handed now.
I was better left-handed anyway.
Ah, there we go.
Man, this is gonna be a long break. Can we start already?
Uh, I don't think they'll let us. Okay, we'll take a brief recess and we'll start at 11:30. We will go ahead and call our commission meeting for December 18th, 2019 to order. Appreciate everybody's attendance. We'll go ahead and begin with an invocation offered by Commissioner Hadfield, and then our county treasurer, Sean Thornley, will lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be gathered this day, grateful for the many blessings that we do enjoy. We're grateful for this time of season that we have to be able to remember the Savior's birth and to be able to share goodwill with one another. Father, we're grateful for this land and for the opportunity we have to be here and for the good people that live and work here. Father, please bless us this day as we go through these items that we can do what is best for the good of the county, that we can keep things moving forward and do things that will help build a better place for our children and grandchildren. Father, we're grateful for them, men and women who serve us here locally and abroad. Please bless them, especially this time during this season, that they will know that they are appreciated and loved. And these are favors and blessings we ask you for, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, any questions, concerns, clarifications on the minutes?
Nope.
I'd make a motion we approve the minutes from November 20th, 2019.
Second.
Have a motion?
December 4th.
December 4th.
It says November 20th.
Yeah, it does say November 20th.
It's December 4th.
Okay. Let me change that then. I'll approve the minutes for December 4th, 2019.
I'll still second it.
And these are the revised that you sent out this morning?
Right.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hadfield and a second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Excuse me. Any former agenda items, any correspondence, any reports, any gentleman need to cover?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, very good.
You gotta take off 11:50, right?
Uh, yeah, we'll go ahead and remove 11:50. Our county auditor had an update on the travel policy, not quite ready, so hit that in January. Okay, very good. All right. Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Thank you. I have some hard copies of this report, and I think you have it electronically. Would you like a hard copy?
Um, I've got an electronic here and then I've got the hard one at my office, so I think I'm good.
I'll take a hard copy for just for the record.
So each year, it's required by law, I think...
Oh, we know who you are, but we'd better have you state your name and where you're from for the record.
Rob Johnson, Bear River Mental Health. Each year, required by law, that the local mental health authorities receive a copy of the audit and have an interview with the executive officers of the corporation, and that's what we're fulfilling today by this. And then if you accept the audit, then you can sign that sheet and saying that that's been fulfilled. So if we turn to page six in the audit, this is the independent auditor's report. In the opinion section there, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Bear River Mental Health Services, Inc., as of June 30th, 2019 and 2018." And I'll just go through some of the financial highlights. On page seven is the statement of financial position or the balance sheet. Then on page eight is the statement of activities or the income statement. And I'll just point out here that if you look down at that second number in the 2019 column, the 453,000 of the county funds, that is the amount that Cash Rich in Box Elder County put in, and that money matches the state dollars, which in turn match the federal dollars. And if you think of our revenue structure as an inverted pyramid with the county at the bottom, that 450,000 really supports that $10 million worth of mental health services that we're providing to the citizens of the catchment area. And we appreciate your being willing to make that local contribution. Thank you. You can see third number up from the bottom in that 2019 column, we made, we had a profit of $67,000 for the year. Then if we turn to page 25...
Is that primarily due to less inpatient?
That was a big factor, Commissioner. If we turn to page 25, this is in the letter from the independent auditors on internal control. At the end of that first paragraph, "The results of our tests disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under governmental auditing standard." And then on page 26 and 27 is the auditor's communication with those charged with governance, and they go through, and what those two say is that they didn't encounter any problems while doing their audit of Bear River Health. And I am open to any questions if you have any.
This was the first year that this firm had audited?
Correct.
And they used to do the state?
They used to, they did, they're the Medicaid auditors, so they audited Bear River Mental Health's Medicaid profitability report, and they've done that for a number of years. So we use Davison Bot for the 10 years previous to this year.
Okay.
And you just bit that out? Is that what you did?
Yes.
It was an RFP, yeah.
RFP.
No, that was one thing I wanted to point out, because sometimes when you do have an external audit and a different auditing firm comes in, they may have an exception or they may find something just because they're looking at different items, and so to have a good opinion is...
Good.
Good, yeah. Says that you're doing things well all the way around, so.
Thank you.
You gentlemen have any questions?
Nope.
I don't have any questions, because I got a real in-depth on this at our last meeting, so. Okay, well, Rob, we appreciate your work on this and your staff. You guys do a great job over there and...
Thank you.
And everything, so.
We appreciate you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the audit report for FYE 2019.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hadfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Thanks for bringing your family.
Yeah, appreciate you bringing guests.
Is he gonna take you out to lunch, or?
Yeah. If you want to sign that, I can take that with me, or would you rather just send it?
We can go ahead and sign it right now. Do you need all three of us?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need a copy of that, Marla?
I do need a copy.
Thank you.
Chrissy will make a copy and then give you the original.
Rob?
Good to see you guys.
She'll make a copy for you.
Okay. Marla, back to the beer licenses.
Yep, so we have four in our county. Riverside Corner, let me get you all the names, The Gone Country out in Grouse Creek, Trigon, that's in South Willard, and The Fast Stop in Plymouth. They've all been signed off by Sheriff Potter, and where there's not been any problems.
What was the second one?
GC Gone Country.
GC?
I think it's just called Gone Country Convenience Store now.
Okay, that's the one in Grouse.
All right. I'll make a motion, we approve the Riverside Corner, Gone Country, Trigon, and Fast Stop beer licenses.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hadfield and a second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Thornley?
We've had a request from a taxpayer for forgiveness of penalty that has been on her late payment of her taxes. I believe you've received her letter, but the gist of it is just that she's been sick and is asking that you forgive the penalty on her parcel.
Yeah, I received the letter. It sounded like she had a sickness, meant to come in, missed the deadline, came in a day or so late and paid it.
Yeah, she hasn't been in, but she did pay it electronically, I believe.
Okay.
She paid electronically.
All right.
From the letter.
And so she's just asking for the late fee to be forgiven?
Yep. Thirty-three dollars, forty-four cents.
Okay. How timely, I mean, was it just a day or two after the deadline? Do you know when the receipt of funds came through?
I would have to look. I don't know what date she paid.
All right.
I don't have a problem. Thirty-three bucks.
My...
I do. I mean, just for the principle of it. I mean, we've had how many people come in with reasons and excuses, you know, a day late or whatever? I know that it's, you know, even with an illness, but it's like, okay, you know, you knew you were late. It's thirty-three dollars. Because I just think it's a slippery slope. We've said that before.
It's hard to judge who has the best reasons for not paying on time.
Yeah. Well, that's why I just, I feel like if you don't hold firm to a deadline, then it just gets more and more waffly. That's my feeling.
Aye. Yeah. I read her letter, so it's not that. If I make a motion, he's not gonna second it, so. Which is fine. But you can second it, I guess, if you want to.
I was just looking back on the...
The letter?
Yeah, it came in December 6th, so.
That's four days late.
Yeah.
Actually, it was just two days back, maybe it's January 2nd.
December 2nd was the last day to pay.
I'd make a motion that we approve the penalty waiver for thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Looks like the motion will fail for a lack of a second, so it sounds like the late fee will stand.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks for the background, Sean.
Appreciate it.
Okay, on to community development. The taller version of Scotland. Did you get that in the minutes, Marla?
Of course.
We'll make sure we send those minutes to you.
I'll give you a special set of minutes for you.
Thank you. So this is the Ranch Estates two lot subdivision up by what's called Radio Hill by Tremont. This is a little portion in the county. I think I included it in your packet when I sent it in, so. Probably the only thing that looks different from when you saw it there is... There's an easement added here, but...
Is that closer to Tremont or Garland? When are they gonna...
So right here is Tremont.
Right. So are they talking about trying to annex it, the rest of the development, or?
Not right now.
Okay.
We'll see in the future, I guess.
Yeah, there's an 1,100 acre parcel up there that looks like it's gonna be taken into effect here pretty quick, so.
Do you have an address?
What's that?
Do you have the address?
Oh, yeah, it's 3101 West and 1,000 North Tremont.
So this is not quite on the back side, but getting close?
No, this is still on the front side of the BR.
Okay. All right.
Christians have a whole bunch of acreage up there and so does Carmelone, so.
Oh, so there you have it.
So this has been through the administrative process and comes with recommendation from approval from everybody.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the Ranch Estates.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hadfield and a second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Marcus. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Thanks, I need one of those.
Throw it so hard, Master, you know? Master?
Yeah.
I don't have a pocket for an all.
Did you just smack me on that?
No, luckily it was the chair creaking. Excess weight.
Yeah, you'd have probably heard something worse than that. He'd have made me sad.
That's it, Marcus? Just one? Wow, okay.
Hey, thanks.
Thanks, Marcus. Okay, Tom? Yeah, if you stick around up here, he's looking for a challenger, so.
I'm good.
Left-handed.
I could use both hands, I'd still lose. So the first item is Resolution 1907, it's to amend this current year's budget. Those items include to increase the budget for the bleacher project, also increase the budget for buildings and grounds to continue to do the light project in this building. And then we also increased some CIP monies to go and purchase two new forerunners for the sheriff's office to help mitigate some of the demands that are being placed as their department becomes fully staffed, so. That is the Resolution 1907.
I'll make a, I'll make a resolution.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Resolution 1907.
Second.
Very good, just one question. Were those being moved forward out of 20, the forerunners, or these were?
No, they're in addition.
They're, okay.
That's why.
Yeah, because I mean, it sounds like there's still gonna need to be some more.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hadfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 1908, that is for the budget for 2020. So as we had the public hearing two weeks ago, we presented various items in there. Our HR department looked at some, and she brought to my attention that we had missed, I had missed, some of the numbers in a couple of departments, nothing material, just a, it would be material for that department, but overall, there's a few thousand, like in tourism or the HR department. And then also Sheriff Potter contacted me regarding some CSI services that they are interested in using for Weber County, so we put those into the budget. So those are the only changes that I can think of that we made since the public hearing.
And materially, that wouldn't have amounted to 25 or $30,000 total, would it?
Yep.
Okay.
So that is what is in for our 2020 budget for the county.
Okay. Gentlemen, have any final questions?
I don't.
Okay.
You explained it pretty good.
It's four months of fun.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 19-08 for the 2020 budget.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hadfield and a second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think Marla has the...
Official signature, son.
Very good.
There's the...
Thanks for all your work on that, Tom.
Ones for the 2019 amendments and then the others.
While we're signing this, Cody, will you come up front here in this chair and let me gush on you a little bit? Man crush on you? Is that okay?
I'm doing good, Andy.
I know better than that. Tip me on my head. This is Cody Spur Merritt, and he's been married for 10 years to Jolene. He was born in Star Valley, Wyoming in 1974, which makes you a pup.
Don't feel like it.
He lived, he, his family moved to Garland and lived there until up to he was 23, and he served a mission in Toronto, Canada. And his wife and him now live in Mendon, where she was from, right? And have a 20-year-old daughter who has, who has all, yeah.
She's also an arm wrestler.
Is also arm wrestling. I didn't know that.
She went to Worlds Turkey last year with me.
Really? Oh my gosh.
Fifth and seventh.
Wow. He is the current super weight-heavy, left-hand national champion in both the Masters Division and the Seniors Open Division. And he's also the reigning world champion in the same divisions, and he was able to compete Team USA in Romania one of this year. And then he says, "Did I forget anything else?" And if you ever want to see something pretty cool, you can go on YouTube and look at the compilation that somebody did for him on his accomplishments, and I'm telling you, I mean, Cody's not a real tall guy, and some of these guys he goes against, I'm just looking at him going, "Holy crap." And the next thing you know, it's within seconds, and these poor people are looking there like, "Wait a minute, he just, what do you call it, pinned?"
Pinned him.
Pinned him within seconds, and I think it's pretty cool, we have a national championship, a world champion and a national champion, you know, that's from Box Elder County that is a Bear River bear. And we just wanted to give you a little certificate and recognize you in front of the county and put you on record as, I mean, when I was growing up, there was LJ Sylvester that was from the Olympics, that was from Bay River, and...
He's also a world champion as well.
Yeah, and also a world champion as well, so.
A big champion and world champion.
When he keeps looking this way, he's looking right past me.
I'm the lone Box Elder B here.
I'm a bear as well, so.
So we'd like to get a picture with you. If you'd like to, if there's anything else you want to say, but he's got some medals here that are really, really cool. I mean, I've held some Olympic medals, and this one he's got is pretty awesome, so we've got a little certificate of achievement. Will you take some pictures with us?
Sure.
Show them your medals.
So you get the right shoulder fixed, you can wave your hand right. It's a good picture, thanks guys. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, have a Merry Christmas.
Let's see, Commissioner Summers, you want to do a report on what you're thinking on the Bear River development?
The state has released about the Bear River Bay, the Bear River development, a compilation of the last probably 10 years. It has been pushed back, I don't know, five years every time we do something. I think...
It's supposed to be 2015, and now they're thinking somewhere between 2040 and 2050, yeah.
Explain what it is a little bit.
What's that?
Explain what the water development is.
So the Bear River development is winter water storage from the Bear River that has not been actually used, and there's 273,000 acre feet of that that can be stored, and...
220 of it's allocated.
Yeah.
60 to us, 60 to Cash, 50 to Jordan, and 50 to Weber.
Right. So they're talking about some sort of dam system above Weber. They're talking about something possibly in Logan a little more. So our biggest problem is some of the pipelines... So, our biggest problem is some of the pipelines they're looking at right now are going right through basically I-15 down through Perry, Willard. And we would like to talk a little bit about that being a commission. We don't wanna have a resolution saying that we're against it, but we would like to really have them take a good learn, hard look about where they wanna put this. 'Cause in our opinion, and if something happens, um, down I-15, I mean, we've seen what's going on with the gas line down I-89, or eighty-nine, US eighty-nine, and it's been a nightmare, so. Can you imagine a ten-foot pipeline full of water going down basically the middle of our county, so we'd like to make sure that they know that we're on record and hopefully they can figure out another way, and we'd like to see him head west with that pipeline and go out through Howe and, and down through the Promontories and.
We've been nudging him to look at alternatives.
Yeah, I mean, just to think about it, that, uh, that pipe would be about a third the size of this room. So, it's not small.
And in comparison, um, they just put four feet on top of Willard Bay and got it up to two hundred and ninety thousand acre feet of water storage. And so basically, it would be the same sort of type of water storage for the Bear River Bay. So if something would, were to happen to that, it would have that kind of water flowing down through the middle of the county, so.
But they won't let us make it because one was fed and one was state.
Exactly.
One tastes better than the other?
Yeah. The raindrops fall on different land.
So we just wanted to make sure everybody realized that we are on top of this, and hopefully that, uh, like I said, they'll, it's, it's in the plan in very small letters, it says they are looking at alternatives now because of the plain fact that all three of us have been talking to them about making sure that it's not gonna go right straight down the middle of Bear River, Boxhother, so.
I think they were just taking for granted the fact that that was the easiest place, and so they just planned on it until we asked them to look at other, other ideas.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
That's it.
Thanks on that. If anybody does wanna look at it, it's, it's available, you can go out to the Division of Water Resources and, uh, you can get it, it's a report that was done by Bowen and Collins, so. All right, eleven fifty-nine, indigent cremation, uh, this is a request that we received from Myers Mortuary. It's for a Mrs. Bachelor, um, passed away, age ninety-seven. A widow, no children, uh, no assets of any kind, was in a local nursing home, and, uh, only source of income was social security. Uh, she passed away and has been cremated, and typically when somebody is in this situation, it's considered indigent, and we have a, a small fund that's set aside to, uh, help take care of them. Uh, many of the mortuaries now are going towards cremation, uh, rather than doing the, um, typical burial, uh, because of, uh, just the cost. It's more cost prohibitive, so. Uh, the, the bill that came from Myers is nine hundred and fifty-two dollars of that, about, oh, fifteen percent, fifteen to twenty percent of it is the cremation permit alone, and then they did a discounted, uh, cremation and professional services, so the total bill is nine fifty-two.
And we all usually, we upped it to seven hundred and fifty though, right? That we usually do? From last year?
I think you talked about upping it in your budget for next year.
I think we upped it last year.
I think we've had, it's just the fourth one? I think we've only had three or four since, since I've been in.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's, it's pretty minimal, it's, and it's, it's a nice service that the local mortuaries do provide, but at the same time, you know, they're, they're already giving a, a discount, so.
I just can't remember if we used, did the whole amount.
You did the last one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bill for the indigent burial.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hatfield, all in favor?
Aye.
That may be something that we wanna look at and, uh, just put a cap, and maybe, uh, send that out to the local mortuaries and just say, you know, anything below this, we, we can handle, anything above that.
Why can't the state waive their fee, their permit?
The state upped their fee, that's the problem, we usually, we have a five hundred dollar one, and I think we upped it to seven fifty, but.
They need some ownership on it.
The state actually upped their fee by two hundred and fifty bucks, that's the problem, that's why it's gone up so high.
Okay. All right, very good.
When is your RDA?
Uh, let's see.
Twelve fifteen.
Do you have some, uh, PAs that we can work on? We can start the RDA meeting, we just can't do a public hearing.
Oh, hello.
Yeah, let's, let's start PAs.
Play some slow music or something.
There's a couple. Sign really slow, you might be able to read my writing.
Have Keith put on the Christmas thing.
Put up, put up the Dancing Elves again. I don't make everybody gut. Hope it's okay, I had him send out our little video to UAC. Is that okay?
Sure. Going down there on that bylaws thing on Friday?
Um, I'll be in a MRI. Unless it's, my MRI is after that. And I don't know until the nineteenth. Did you bring me my spool yet?
It was, they said you came out, it was right there by the, you must not have seen it, it snowed on it.
I didn't see it.
It snowed, so I'll have him put it in the shop.
Okay.
'Cause it's, it's out there, I was like, how come you didn't take it? And they said, oh, we forgot.
Missed it. I looked for it, but.
Oh, yeah, it was right there as you cross the scales, it's right off to the side.
Oh, really?
But it got snowed on, so.
Well, next time, if you come down, just drop it off at Jan's. I got about five more from Washington.
We're picking up our generator tomorrow, so we'll be in town, so I'll just take it there and pick up the generator.
Cool, thank you.
Is he doing a spool garden, a obstacle course or something?
Paintball. Not using them as, like, alternative tables at the fair, so then they can just pull chairs around them and stand around them.
Good recycling project, really, don't pick up a lot of space even if you smash them, 'cause they're solid.
Yeah. Once we, once we do it, all the other fairs envy us and they'll want them too, so.
Con will pull all of them out to recycle, I mean, that's.
What's that?
Get everybody to bring their branding irons in.
Brand them, oh yeah. That'd be cool. We should do that, and we can just roll them, put them away and.
I think that'd be a lot of fun.
There's some that are pretty tall, where you can stand and.
Wire spool, they're, they're the wooden spools.
Smaller ones that you can just sit by?
People have made them entertain us.
I finally talked Janet to try on a couple this next year at the fair.
He's gonna recycle one.
We're just running out of places for people to sit, stand and eat.
That's not like.
So you're saying the fair's popular?
Seems to be.
People get ideas like that. We need something for tires. We need people to get creative with tires. Really big giant mining tires, and especially. It's ridiculous, there's nothing. I'm not creative.
Did you see what Chrissy gave me, my gnome?
I love that. Those are so cute.
That tells you how bored I am.
You're crafty.
Didn't know I had it in me, did you?
Yeah, I know, I didn't.
My wife actually told me yesterday, she goes, don't do anymore, I wanna do some. I said, get your own rice. Oh yeah, we can do the agreements. Yeah? Okay. That'll be good. Do you wanna open up the RDA, after you sign that?
Let's open it.
Motion to adjourn?
Steve will second that.
Welcome.
Oh, did I send it to you?
And our condolences to your mom.
Yeah. All right, Mitch, all you.
Say.
When Marla says.
You wanna do?
It's all you. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the, uh, RDA, uh, meeting to, uh, to order for Wednesday, December eighteenth, twenty nineteen.
Do we have minutes on this?
We do, from December fourth, it was when, um, Scott.
Agenda, so.
Erickson was here with Standard Wellness. Anybody have any questions or concerns on those minutes? Clarifications?
Chrissy, do we have an RDA for this? I don't think so, I love it.
It would've been behind.
Oh, that's not it.
Go one more. One more. Is that it?
Nope. Oh, right, that's right there. That's right here, he just gave that to you.
Oh, okay.
He got you pulled up. Sorry, Chrissy, I didn't see it. I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for December fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hatfield, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's see, our public hearing, uh, will be at twelve fifteen, so yeah, if you wanted to, uh, do these, uh, these reports first, Mitch, that would be great, or, well, yeah, do those reports, and we'll have Tom come up and, uh, do the, uh, the budget just before.
I think, uh, I think that is Tom's report.
Yeah.
Is what it's, I have the two.
Right.
Number three, if you wanna do the two agreements, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
So these, uh, this is the cost reimbursement agreements between us and the developer for the two solar projects we're working on. Um, generally speaking, what it is, is we pay, um, UAC, who is our contractor, uh, and then they reimburse us as the developer, um, for the full amount, so. I don't know, Steve, have you had a chance to, to take a look at these?
I tried in last night, fell asleep a couple of times.
So what I would suggest is, uh, if you're okay with it in general, uh, we make it contingent upon Steve.
And not fall asleep.
Final, uh, review of it, but.
They must've been good contracts if they put you to sleep.
No, it was, it was about twelve thirty tonight, and I just couldn't do it anymore, so I tried.
Wow. All right.
Yeah.
Twelve thirty AM? We need to talk, okay. I'm assuming that they're essentially the same agreement, it's just on the two different sites.
Yeah, they're, uh, identical.
You look like a form agreement, though, was it a form?
Yes, I mean, to some degree, it's came from UAC or.
Couldn't tell the difference between the two.
Yeah, they're both, they're both identical, we just need to, there's one for the rocket solar project, and there's one for the steel solar project. So they're the same.
Same developer, same company.
Same developer, same company.
Okay. Just two different locations. All right.
Okay.
Give you something to do on Christmas Eve.
Twelve thirty, when you're waiting for Santa.
All right.
I don't know if you have any other questions on that.
I don't.
No, that's a good deal.
Yeah, I think we talked at length with, uh, Stuart and Patrick and everybody about this, so.
Just appreciate your work getting this done, that'd be good for the county.
Good.
Oh, sorry, I was trying to get the.
It's okay.
Agenda thing straightened out here, so.
I'll make it if you want me to.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, RDA agreement.
Do you wanna make it contingent upon?
Contingent upon Steve's, Steve's approval on Agreement nineteen dash oh six.
And.
And nineteen dash oh seven.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hatfield and a second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Mitch.
Almost.
Thank you, Mitch.
I wonder how Tom is hanging around, it's good to hear between us right now.
I'm sure there's something up here you could toss at him. Uh, Tom?
Lucky I can't reach that far with my leg.
Budget session number two.
Hopefully it's still here from when we met.
For the commission, I hope it is.
Keith asked us to clear stuff off, hopefully nobody cleared that off.
So I thought, I was like, there's a good chance they probably moved it. So talk amongst yourselves.
Talk amongst ourselves.
I would never blame Keith for anything. I'm smarter than that.
And I don't think Keith must be here. Keith must not be here.
His wife's had shoulders, his wife's had a couple surgeries recently.
He wasn't here yesterday.
I did actually have somebody tell me in Salt Lake the other day that they had watched our commission meetings. So, yeah.
Just for laughs?
Uh, I don't know.
Or was it like Steve to put him to sleep?
And, uh, that flat panel up there, just so everybody's aware, that is a microphone. And so it picks up all of the.
Really?
Uh-huh, oh, absolutely. I found that out yesterday. So. Yeah, so if anybody sniffs or coughs out there, that picks it up, so, there you have it. It helps with, um, public hearings and large groups, so. I've got nothing else to say, Tom.
You're doing great.
No. Please, no. There we go.
Two blondes walk into the building, you'd think one of them would've seen it. It's the only clean one I know. Microsoft? Okay. You tell me when.
Can you make it bigger?
All right, Tom, all yours.
Not till twelve fifteen.
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, you can do a report or anything you wanna cover, and then we'll open it up.
All right, so this is the public hearing for the Boxhother County Redevelopment Agency for their twenty twenty budget. The Boxhother County RDA consists of four funds within our financial software. Uh, one is the admin, the other's the Ag Park, Procter and Gamble, and Plymouth. The three are to represent the three projects that our RDA is currently doing. So twelve fifteen.
It is, we'll go ahead and open the, uh, the public hearing for the Boxhother County RDA meeting. Okay.
So in twenty eighteen, which is the, the most recent year we have available, what we paid in tax increment. So this is what Boxhother County paid or forgoes in property taxes and passes on to the redevelopment agency. So on Procter and Gamble, four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, the Ag Business Park is twenty-eight thousand dollars, the Plymouth is twenty-one and change. So that's just the county's portion, that doesn't include the other participating entities. As you're aware from our public hearing on the county's budget, the school district by far is the largest participating entity in most RDA projects. There are some in the county with other entities that they have opted out of, uh, like Perry Point, the school district does not participate in, but that was with Perry City and not us. So go ahead.
What's the, what's the timeframe on, on these three, as far as being done?
Um.
You know?
The Ag Park, I believe, is twenty twenty-one.
Pretty close.
And then P and G is still a ways out.
Six or seven years out, isn't it?
More than that.
Oh, is it?
We redid that.
There's two phases.
Oh, that's right, okay.
And we anticipate their second phase to kick off this year, in twenty twenty, not, we anticipate that to happen. Uh, the Plymouth one, it could wrap up. I, I think that one had a, if I remember right, Mitch is hopefully there nodding or not nodding.
Mitch just raised his hand.
Fifteen years, or ten years.
The November first report has all the, the details in that.
Okay.
Okay.
So the next one, so these are the Brigham City projects that the county participates in. Uh, so those are the campus, the Northwest, X twenty, which is Cotter Canyon and that business park, uh, the West Forest EDA, which is the water bottle plant. And then, with the hotel property, the county has an agreement that we do pay property, we, we've sent our property taxes over, but we also send one-third of the TRT generated from the hotel over to the city as well. Tremont only has one RDA that we participate in, it is the Tremont Center, which is, uh, Greer, Shopco, I forget what else is in that, shopping.
Basically West Main.
Yeah, Shopco's not there, yeah. And Perry City has the one EDA that we participate in, which is Perry Point. So Jeff, you can go back. If you click on the, go up. Up more. It's going to be about slide twenty.
Okay.
Nineteen. That one. So as you look at the, what we're anticipating to spend for this year's RDA budget, it's the five point, whoops, I can't read it, three point eight, three million eight hundred seventy-two thousand, god, if I read the right number. Let's read the expense number. Four million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-four thousand dollars is the budget for the RDA. Now the RDA, those projects fund themselves, um, they're generating, they get the increment from the taxes that are generated within that project area, that's what we use to pay, uh, whatever participation agreements the RDA has entered into, uh, some other things. Uh, the sale of the property that happened along the Ag Park, that will also go into those, that allows for different things for the, for the RDA to look at to do. That Mitch is the executive director, he can propose different ideas to the commission to do. But really, that's, that's where we at, that's where we sit with the RDA. Uh, any questions from the commissioners?
No, I'm good.
No.
It's pretty much the same. Not much changes in those.
Okay.
So twenty twenty, when that second one comes in with P and G, that second phase, that will actually up that by, do we have a percentage or do we have, I mean, it'll exponential?
Hopefully.
Yeah, okay.
We'll see a new line.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll see another line.
Very good. You gentlemen have any questions?
I see lines in my sleep.
Okay. All right, the, uh, the public hearing for the Box Elder County RDA for the budget is open, if anyone, uh, anyone would like to speak, um, please speak, uh, specifically to this topic, uh, maximum of three minutes. Thank you.
Deanna Hardy Brigham, um, we have to remember that we are a representative republic and everybody took an oath to uphold this constitution, but it keeps getting ignored. Someone talked about earlier, we're going, some people, you may be going down a slippery slope if you don't approve to keep in line with the payment of the late fees. Well, we've already gone on a very slippery slope. The RD, RDA, uh, is a non-constitutional program and I oppose it, I oppose the, uh, the budget. I oppose everything that you do with it because you're picking winners and losers, um, it's not helping the people at all. Um, the taxes just go back in to pay for more property to be bought, to help more businesses come in, but the county's budget isn't decreasing, it keeps increasing, and it's really wrong what we're doing. We're not allowing the free markets to work, we're allowing government to come in and dictate what businesses come into our county, and this is very wrong. So again, I will oppose it and I ask you again to please do away with the RDAs, this is not right, it's not fair. The government's not supposed to be involved in this. Thank you. I should say, government's not.
Oh, I was just going to say. You want to close it? I'll make a motion we close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Hadfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So the next item was the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty budget for the RDA, um, I believe it's resolution-
Nineteen oh five.
Nineteen oh five.
Okay, this is the presented budget, the nineteen oh five. If the second phase gets triggered during twenty twenty, we just amend it?
It may do.
Okay.
I'll make a motion we approve the, uh, resolution nineteen dash oh five.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hadfield and a second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thanks again, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Understood that. It's a sad state of affairs when a dentist appointment beats, uh, budget hearings, so. Thanks, Tom, appreciate it. Okay.
I'll make a motion with your, our RDA meeting.
Oh, yeah, second.
And I will, uh, call that to a vote as soon as I sign this.
I'll make a motion, we go into a, uh, executive session to discuss personnel and- and personnel.
Second.
Nothing. Personnel and personnel. I looked, I said, "And," and looked at Steve, he goes, "I got nothing."
Okay, uh, have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.